Hello, Brian. Hello, Jamie.
Hello. Sorry for the delay. I had a little delay in logging on.
I think we should get started then. We have enough of a quorum of planning board members. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Tonight is a work session of the South Kingston Planning Board. The date is Tuesday, July 13, 2021. The time is 7:02. The first item on the agenda is roll call. Joe Murphy?
Yeah.
Susan Axelrod?
Yeah.
Paul Jordan is absent. Robin Pauthier?
Yeah.
Peter Di Stefano?
Here.
Josh Daley is absent and Maria Mack is here. In addition, we have staff. We have Jamie Rabbit, Director of Planning, Jay Parker and Brian Wagner from the Planning Department. We have Legal Counsel Amy Goins. Our first agenda item is cottage zoning establishment of finding of fact on the previously discussed recommendation for transmission to the Town Council for consideration. Jamie, would you like to explain what we're looking at or will be looking at?
Yeah, just Madam Chair, I will do a screen share if Jay will allow me to.
I think you can do it. I don't know if I need to allow you to do it.
There we go. Sorry, Jay. It was buried. Can everyone see that? Just for clarity, understanding that the Planning Board had previously made a motion to approve the proposed text amendment associated with the cottage community regulations, as well as the Design Guidelines, Appendix A. As we referred it to the Town Council, the Town Clerk asked that the Planning Board formalize the finding of facts associated with your motion. So I sent out language late today regarding that. And I can, I'm not sure if everyone received that, but I can briefly review that language if everyone would like me to. Again, looking at the motion would be to hereby approve the amendment to be proposed. South Kingston Subdivision Land Development Regulations to establish cottage community zoning regulations. And the finding of facts were, in essence, the need for affordable housing, consistency with the comprehensive plan that was adopted in 2014 after in conjunction with goals and objectives of the state with regards to low and moderate income housing. Consistency findings with the comprehensive plan. We have the overall goal to promote orderly growth patterns based on natural, cultural and history of character of the towns and suitability views with specific goals in the housing elements. I'm just going to summarize these. Housing choice, vital mix with people, promote and enhance the value sense of place in community, enhance existing housing stock and traditional village development, allow and facilitate affordable housing options throughout the town, encourage a wide range of housing options with regards to housing element policies, allow for village infill and also consider context sensitive design guidelines was one of the goals and Appendix A achieves that. Just for clarity on that, which we'll probably have a question under the overall. There's a reference to the Kingston Subdivision Land Development Regulations. In essence, it's the zoning ordinance.
Are there any questions for Jamie about the process or the content of the motion? Jamie, I'm wondering if, can you? I just want to be sure that everyone can see the entire document, whether they are able to look at it via email rather than the screen share just obviously shows you the first paragraph.
I had sent that out, but again, I can take a moment if people would, if Madam Chair, to your point, if anyone would like to take a moment, I'll leave it up for a minute and then I can scroll down.
That sounds reasonable. Thank you.
So could I ask a naive question about where cottage regulations would apply?
In the R10 and R20 zones within the, within the community.
Okay.
Sewered and watered for access to sewer.
Jamie, I had one thought, even though a little bit further along in the motion where the comprehensive plan is quoted in the first paragraph. If you can scroll back up because I'm only looking at your screen.
Okay.
A little further, yeah. Okay. Under finding effects, yes. Number one, I was thinking that although it's stated later on, in addition to the need for affordable housing, I would like folks to consider adding increased housing choices. So it would be the need for affordable housing and increased housing choices because this is about creating an opportunity for different types of housing in the town. And up until this point, cottage is not something that has been in our regulations.
Staff to the board, I have no issues with that.
Any thoughts from anyone else?
I like it. It's good.
Anyone like me to scroll down to scroll to the findings of
Sure.
consistency goals?
Jamie, may I just ask for some clarification?
Absolutely.
This is Susan. So this is to accompany a text for the ordinance that we've already written. This is just an addition so that we can transfer this to the Town Council. What is the, I guess, I don't understand the bigger picture about what this document is.
Right. So the Planning Board actually made a motion to approve the draft language and Bulletin A, which is the design standards, and refer that to Town Council. And Town Council, a memo went to Town Council. Town Council added to their agenda. Town Council has scheduled a meeting for July 26, public hearing for this. But at that public hearing, I was informed that they need, they, the standard has been that the Town Council, when they make a favorable finding and actually approve the change to the ordinance, they read into the record findings of fact by the Planning Board. Your findings of fact from my perspective were that you reviewed, you wrote, reviewed and approved the ordinance to go to council. But the Town Clerk, in essence, had a standard form and policy that she asked we follow. And that's why you see the document before you.
And Susan, similar to when we vote to approve an item, it's usually begins with findings of fact. So this puts it in that same kind of format. If there are no further questions or additions, since we have a timeframe associated with this, as the public hearing is scheduled for July 26, it would be prudent for this board to make a motion if board members are so inclined. Yes?
Maria, Josh just jumped down. I don't know if he has any comments or thoughts on this before we
I don't see him on the screen. There he is. Welcome, Josh. Josh, we are looking at the findings of fact that will be transmitted to the Town Council along with the cottage zoning regulations. You should have had an email this afternoon from Jamie. Have you had a chance to look at that?
I have. I looked it over and I actually was in the audience watching as you guys were discussing, discussing as well. So I don't have any additional questions.
Great. So that said, would someone like to make a motion? It is on the screen before us, along with findings of fact. I'm sure Jamie can scroll down if need be.
I guess, if you have somebody else, let me get, go ahead, Josh.
Well, maybe as penance for my tardiness, I can read this long thing into the record. So I'll make the motion that the South Kingston Planning Board hereby approves amendments to the South Kingston zoning ordinance, Kingston subdivision and land development regulations to establish cottage, cottage community zoning regulations to promote housing options and infill development. This approval is based upon the following findings of fact and findings of consistency with the town's comprehensive community plan. And then these are the findings of fact. One, the need for affordable housing and increased housing. Do I have to read those in or we don't?
You do not. You can just state the number
Okay.
of findings of fact.
Findings of fact, one, two. Sorry, a little slow here. How many findings of fact are there? I have to pull it back up.
Two, Josh.
Two, and then findings of consistency. One, two, and three.
We have a motion from Josh. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
We have a second from Susan. Is there further discussion? Hearing none. Let's do a roll call vote. Joe Murphy?
Aye.
Susan Axelrod?
Aye.
Robin Pauthier?
Aye.
Peter Di Stefano?
Aye.
Josh Daley?
Aye.
And Maria Mack says aye. Thank you, everyone. Thank you, Jamie.
Thank you for your patience.
Let's continue on to our next agenda item. Zoning text amendment, Fetch S K Inc. Jamie, would you like to give us some background, particularly for those members who may not have been at the previous meeting? And then we'll ask for someone representing the applicant.
Again, I'll, I'll give a broad brush of this and they will drill down a little bit further on the specifics. Again, you have a proposed amendment to the town zoning ordinance before you to allow a dog daycare in a commercial setting. I, I think it's important for the commission to understand that you're acting in a legislative nature and that this is a zoning amendment that will affect other properties within that zoning classification. It is not, in essence, intended to be site specific, although you received testimony at your last meeting with regards to a specific site that this is being proposed for. But I think, you know, just keeping in the back of your head that this is an amendment to the zoning regulations that can be utilized by any landowner within the zoning classification for that particular use. So although the references were site specific to a potential location, again, this, this is broad brushed with regards to a amendment to the general zoning classification associated with doggy daycare. So this could occur in other locations. We did receive correspondence from the applicant's legal counsel regarding some items with regards to performance standards and also his recommendation to classify it as a special use permit process. So Jay, if you have anything to add to that, I would appreciate that.
Thanks, Jamie. I don't have anything to add. James Callahan is here on the call. Did submit a an email to us earlier with some supplemental information that I can share, but I think it might be best to just hand the floor over to James.
Thanks, Jay. Mr. Callahan?
Good evening. Good to see you all again tonight. Thanks for the time. Yeah, we were here last month and you made some suggestions, but I think upon further review, made a lot of sense. The notes I had from the previous meeting included issues regarding square foot to canine ratios, evacuation procedures and whether a special use permit, which would be a good idea. And although I didn't think it at first, I do think it now. I went through a number of different ordinances from different surrounding towns, including Westerly again, Warwick, Exeter and East Greenwich. And I have to go back to Westerly again because I think that is the, the best example of performance standards. And they do allow this use by special use and it is on allowed use. But I think for our purposes, a special use in a CH zone makes the most sense with the performance standards that we enunciated. In addition to adding a square foot to canine ratio of 75 to 100 square feet per dog, per ASP, ASPCA recommendations. Also, one employee at least per 10 to 15 canines, per ASPCA recommendations. Also that all dog owners must sign emergency care release forms as well as have evacuation procedures, which can be a policy. And again, the special use seems to be the best way to do that because this will come back before your board and well, maybe not before your board, but give the zoning board and get a full vetting before any permits are issued. So I think between the information we provided previously and this additional information, I think we covered most of the issues. One thing I did notice in other towns was that this use is allowed by special use or allowed generally in industrial areas, which I think Ms. Mack mentioned previously. That may be a good spot to explore, but that's not what we're looking for here. So I'm not going to necessarily push that, but it is a possibility. But again, we're open to, very, very open to any recommendations to make this happen and be happy to hear any thoughts.
Thank you. Questions from board members? Robin?
I would be interested in the evacuation plan. That was something that stood out to me. And I also, you know, wonder, you know, as the dog leaves the automobile and enters the building, all the what ifs, if somebody drops a leash and it's a high volume traffic area and, and the chaos that that would bring. And, and I also wondered if the restaurants in the plaza had added any comments or concerns.
Not yet. We expect that if this would go through, I'm looking forward now. All the abutters would get notice of the application. And that just doesn't apply to this spot. It applies to any spot in a commercial zone. And we would definitely include policies for arrival and departure for all animals. And of course, the Fetch Inc. would have to have its own liability insurance as would probably the plaza to protect in the event something occurred.
Thank you.
Other questions, comments? Susan?
I thank you for changing this to a special use permit application. I'm much more in favor of this sort of business with a special use permit only. That was, that was great. Can I just clarify with staff? Whether Fetch or any other applicant comes to the town, would it come to Planning Board or would it go to zoning board? Like who would have review authority for this applicant or future applicants?
Amy can correct me if I'm wrong, but as a use permit on a commercial establishment, I believe it would be a DPR advisory to zoning on a special use permit. Does that sound about correct? I am unmuted, right?
Yes. Again, because it's a change in most aspects, it would be a change of use in that change of use class. There are a couple things in existing commercial, which in all likelihood, this would go into that if there's a change in parking, parking layout, traffic circulation or a change in use within the structure that it's being proposed. So this use doesn't exist anywhere. So you can't call it retail. You can't call it service. You can't, you can't take a hair salon and convert it to doggy daycare and say it's a similar use. So my understanding would be it would require the DPR review by the Planning Board on any application to zoning.
And would that, would that include notice to abutters and opportunity for public comment?
So, yeah, so just to clarify, so what Jamie was talking about, the trigger mechanisms that trigger a development review on a commercial application. That's a given, but because this is a special use, this will be a special use permit. I believe because it's on a commercial property, the Planning Board would serve advisory to the zoning board on the special use, just on a special use permit on its itself. So in regards to the advertising, the provided, it doesn't give us with, according to the subdivision regulations, the Planning Board's DPR review would not be, would not have any notification. However, the special use permit with the zoning board would.
Okay.
So the zoning, the public hearings with zoning always have public notice. But development planning applications with planning board do not unless they're seeking waivers. Then they, then there is a public hearing requirement.
Okay. Sorry. So notices would go out to, say, residences that were abutting the property?
I should mention, and this is Amy, and I'm sorry if you were waiting for me to speak first. I was, I was waiting to play cleanup if, if any, and I don't have anything to add to what Jamie said so far. But in response to that question, notice goes out to the owner of the property. So if there are tenants, the tenants wouldn't necessarily know. If it's an owner occupied building, the owners will get notice. So that's, that's standard for all zoning applications. Everything that goes to the zoning board is a public hearing, whether it's a special use permit or variance. Owners within the, the notice area get, get notice as required by law.
Okay. So I guess, let me just clarify. So an apartment building that contains multiple units, the individual tenant, and especially if it was an outdoor dog run, the tenants wouldn't get notice. It would just be
There's no way for an applicant to provide, and this, this isn't just with dogs or kennels. This is just, um, this is just how it works under the zoning enabling act. The legal obligation is to notify the property owner and that's using the tax assessor's records. There's no way or legal obligation to notify the individuals living there. That's up to the property owner if, you know, they're a courteous landlord or not. But it's the property owner's, you know, interest in the property to, you know, exercise their right to appear before the zoning board.
Okay. Thank you.
And just to work off that question, which is a good one. We are still not necessarily seeking an outdoor run. We're just talking about indoors. That's something that you as a board, I think, could address if you did want to include outdoor runs, but we are not looking for that in this particular application.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Joe?
Mr. Callahan, just a couple of questions about some of the information you presented. You had a staff ratio of one to 10 to 15 animals. Was there any additional information when 10 would be appropriate versus when 15 could be appropriate? Whether it's the size of dog or?
That's a good question. The ASPCA recommendations that I found were not exactly on their website. Whenever I tried to find the actual recommendation, this is, this was taken off of a, an article that I found a few years ago. So there were some, different towns had, not different towns, but they had sizes of dogs per square foot. That was more the, with the address. It wasn't necessarily employees per size of dog. It was what kind of dog, a large dog gets more square foot potentially than a smaller dog. But there was no detail on the actual employee ratio. But I can try to find that in the next meeting.
Well, I just found it kind of funny the way it was worded. Normally we'd have like one, minimum of one staff to 15 dogs. I mean, I don't mind the way it's worded because if, as a special use permit, it's something that we can have discussions at the time that there's an application. But I was just kind of trying to educate myself when 10 would be good versus when 15. It's kind of leaving it open the way you have it.
That is a good question. I just copied what they wrote. I don't know exactly why that was. So
All right. Because I had the same question. I had the same question about the area, the 75 to 100. When 75 would be appropriate, 100 would be appropriate.
I had the same question as well. So I can look into that more, more detail and, and provide. I think, I think the 100 square foot is the right way to go, quite frankly. But that gives everybody enough space. The 75 is just something on the recommendation itself that they left open to interpretation.
And would the 100 meet what you're trying to do on this project?
I believe it would.
Okay.
2,000 square feet and they want about 20, 20 dogs.
Those are my only questions, Maria. I do have some comments. I, I think what would be appropriate is for us to see, first of all, I'm in favor of the project. I think it is a big demand and I think the area is good. But I would like to see as part of this, a requirement for operating procedures. And included in that would be the protocol for emergency evacuation. I know you mentioned emergency evacuation, but you mentioned it, I think, in the floor plan. It would typically give you the direction to get out. What I'm really talking about is, once you get the animals out, how do you manage them? You know, what do you manage them? So the protocol for emergency evacuation, a protocol for loss of power. What the environmental controls are, minimum and maximum temperature and the protocol, if those temperatures, you can't stay within those temperatures. Protocol for an emergency vet. If there's a need for that. The protocol for the aggressive animal. Let me know if I'm going too fast here. Maybe a protocol for if there is an incident, if you have a dog bite, the protocol for that incident, and I think that should include the notification to the animal control officer. And a protocol if an animal is not picked up at the end of the day. And I'm hoping that we can maybe have that and, you know, emergency, I mean, in procedures and that those procedures be approved by the animal control officer. And there's probably a couple of other things, but those are the things I think would be appropriate. And it can be used as a training guide for your staff as well.
Thank you, Joe. Those are great comments. Robin?
I was wondering if we knew why South Kingston hasn't previously approved dog daycare centers. Is there a history behind why they're, they're not allowed?
I, I don't believe there have been any applications for anything like this.
It's a relatively new use, right? In the context of, you know, the zoning ordinance and, and regulation of uses. These things tend to pop up when someone wants to open a facility. So I think the answer is probably not that it was considered and rejected by the council. Probably just, it hasn't come up before.
Right. And Mr. Callahan, you may want to do a little additional research in addition to ASPCA. I would suggest looking at AKC, the American Kennel Club. I just Googled it very quickly and they do have some information on how someone would choose the best doggy daycare facility questions to ask and decisions. So you might glean some additional useful information from the AKC.
Yeah, that'd be great. And just to play off that question. In my research, it seemed that kennels were the catchall for doggy daycares in other towns. They were, they referenced boarding and things like that. And for some reason, it just wasn't allowed in, in South Kingston. I don't know if it was an incident or what happened, but.
I have a question. Is there like a state facility or, or state government agency that oversees this type of thing? Like, I know Joe has a lot of great points, but there might, might be redundant, right? Like there might be a facility that manages that. I'm not sure if anyone knows that.
There is, the Department of Environmental Management has rules and regulations governing animal care facilities, which is pretty comprehensive. I think I submitted that in the original package, but it has a lot of detail and actually talks about weights of different animals. and actually talks about weights of different animals. I didn't see the dog, as Mr. Murphy's question, they have weights of cats and weights of other animals. I didn't see the rabbits, does, I didn't see the dog reference. But that is one of the, one of the good points we can, we can point to and use to provide a better, comprehensive performing standard plus, you know, make sure you provide it to make the next meeting.
So, and this is Amy, when we get to that point, you know, the recommendation to the council could, could include the items that, that the board is concerned about to the extent that they're not already required by state law or regulation.
Yes, that makes sense. There is a state veterinarian who ordinarily wouldn't be involved in anything of this nature unless there was a problem.
May I ask a question, please? On the performance standards, on item, sorry, sorry, on item four, onsite waste facilities shall be designed to accommodate all animal waste generated and shall include hosing and cleanup facilities. Can you clarify what onsite waste facilities is? And, you know, if that's simply using the town's sewer system to dispose of waste and whether or not that would create any problems with the town's sewer system? Or if there's a different way that you dispose of waste?
Uh, you know, I don't have that answer unfortunately. I think Peter Pelliotta had to answer. I don't think he's on the meeting tonight. He took over a recent business. I think he's busy with that in Peasdale. But I will get that answer for you at the next meeting. They have a whole, they have a whole sewage or waste facility plan that I can provide. It's a, it's a system. I'm not sure how it works with the, the actual sewer system.
I'm sorry, that is the actual sewer?
I'm not sure if it actually works within the sewer system where it's transported out of the facility itself in another way.
Okay, thank you.
Robin?
So your document does refer to the town of Westerly's comprehensive pet daycare facility standards. And it would be nice to see what those standards include, how, how that is worded.
Yes, I can write that as well.
Madam Chair, just to follow up on a couple of questions that the board members had. DEM, I am, I do believe they do have a licensing process for kennels. And they also call out for social aspects, including doggy daycare. There is a licensing process with DEM. The second aspect is with the, we'll call it teacher or oversight to dog ratio. When I saw the, that email earlier this afternoon, I did have a brief chance to, to look at that. And the research that I did clarifies that it's basically based on not size of dog, but activity of dog. That if you have, you know, if you had 10 Labrador Retrievers, your ratio in essence would be 10 to 1. But if you had 10 Nufis that are basically just hanging out and very docile, you're, you may have a 1 to 15 ratio. So it's based on activity, not on size of dog. You could have 15, you know, 10 very small active dogs. If you had 10 terriers, you may need a 1 to 10 ratio, even though they're very small. So again, the, the information that I saw was based on activity of the dog. And that is something that the owners need to be prepared for and deal with.
Interesting, Jamie. So it's temperament supersedes weight?
Temperament supersedes, you know, if you had my three-year-old lab, you, you probably could have no one in the room for the entire day, just food and water, and she'd be happy. So, just be, and a couple of stuffed animals. But when she was one-year-old, you would need 10 people to watch my one dog.
Any further comments or questions? Mr. Callahan, so you will provide us with the information that we requested at the next meeting, yes?
Yeah, I'll provide a, the Westerly, the full Westerly ordinance, as well as a revised, proposed ordinance with performance standards for this proposal, which I think will meet all, everything you've asked for.
Thank you. I think that will be very helpful. Joe raised a lot of points that I think we may not have thought about initially, but loss of power, extreme heat, extreme cold, those are all potential situations. So thank you. We will see you next time.
Great, very much. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Just to be clear for everyone's education, the next meeting being the regular session or the work session in August?
Mr. Callahan, when do you think that you might be prepared? And Jay, what does our regular meeting look like?
Regular meeting has a, a few items on it, not terribly exhaustive at this time. But we are, I don't have access to the minutes from the last work session. And I believe Mr. Callahan agreed to an extension of time. I just, off the top of my head, I don't recall what that takes us out to. I want to say it was August. But again, we have, there's deadlines that we need to, the planning board needs to process this and hand it off to the council. So we just need to be wary of that, provided Mr. Callahan is okay with the time that it will take to, to go through the process with the board.
Mr. Callahan, do you have a sense of what that is? And I'm sure you have the date for the extension that was initially given?
Right, I think we met on June 22nd. This is the work session, July 13th. Is your next meeting July 27th, your, your regular meeting?
Yes.
Yes.
And then August 24th, if needed. I think we can get the information to you for July 24th. And if there's an issue, we can go for August. But I think my clients would like to move forward as quickly as possible.
So, and just to be clear, that's July 27th?
27th. And obviously you understand that the information needs to be sent to the department.
As soon as possible.
Well, before you ask, correct answer. Thank you then. We will see you potentially at our next regular meeting.
Madam Chair, just one other point for Mr. Callahan. We have a very hard date next week of the 21st, or agenda package going out. So we would, we would definitely need that information. 20th would be preferred, but early on the 21st, not the latest.
Understood.
Thanks, Jamie. Always good for applicants to have that information. All right, thank you very much. Our next agenda item is a zoning text amendment, Jerry Brown Farm Road. Jamie or Jay or Brian, would you like to give us a little bit of background and information on this request?
Again, Madam Chair, Jamie Rabbit, Planning Director. Again, I'm going to look at a broad overview and Jay can fill in the gaps. And we do have representatives, Attorney Kenyon is here this evening to go over this. Again, you have a proposed text amendment associated with an existing condition exacerbated by regulations associated with nonconformity. Again, I would remind the planning board that, again, this is a regulation. Not all, they, they are seeking a change to resolve a situation that is near and dear to this property and to landowners. That it is a change to the general nature of the town's zoning code and could have much further implications than beyond the site. That this is subject to some discussion this evening. Again, they're looking for an expansion and clarification in language of the expansion of a nonconforming structure. Staff will provide some questions either tonight or as follow-up to this, based on Mr. Kenyon's presentation. But there are concerns about the nature of the expansion of the nonconformity. Again, we'll use the example, if a property contains 10,000 square feet of footprints and the property was subject to a 50% expansion, which would be 5,000 square feet, would you attribute that to one new unit, a new unit on the property? Or is that 5,000 square feet divvied up between perhaps 10 units, where every unit would get a 500 square foot addition? So again, to me, there has to be some proportionality. And maybe it can be addressed, addressed with an overall master and associated with the project or property that this may be subject to. So again, Mr. Kenyon is here and he can provide more insight. And Jay Parker is also here from our staff. If he has any additional insight to provide before Mr. Kenyon comes on board this evening.
All right, Mr. Kenyon, you have the floor.
Great, thank you. Good evening, everybody. For the record, I'm John Kenyon, attorney for the applicant Jerry Brown Farm Association, Inc. With me tonight is Eric Thorcelson, who's the president of the association, Marshall Rayouchi, who's the director. I don't know if Jay or someone can bring them into the meeting. And while that's happening, to go a little off subject here, I was just listening to the last matter. And the question came up, why this wasn't in the zoning ordinance already? And I don't know anything about the proposed amendment. What I did, there is a use code, pet daycare facility, use code 5.1 in the zoning ordinance. And it's permitted by special use permit in industrial one zone. And we did get one, we received a special use permit for a facility in the High Street Mills a few years ago. So I just figured I'd let you know that. I didn't know if the board was aware of that or not.
Thank you.
And so tonight, we're here, we submitted a zoning ordinance amendment along with a narrative, continuing the reasons for the request. And the proposed amendment would change the language to section 203 of the zoning ordinance, which regulates the expansion of nonconforming uses. That section limits the expansion of nonconforming uses of a building or structure to less than 50% of the existing floor area existing at the time the use became nonconforming. And the proposed language would exempt properties containing more single-family residents than permitted from the 50% limitation, as long as the proposed expansion still meets the setback in lot coverage requirements. The applicant would also still have to go through the special use permit process with the zoning board. As we explained in the narrative, the Jerry Brown Farm contains 36 houses on 70 acres. One lot that's 70 acres in size and is in an R80 zoning district. The association owns the land and the homeowners have a lease of a campsite and a share of stock in the association. The, the previous zoning ordinance required a special exception to expand a house in Jerry Brown Farm, and there was no 50% limitation. The new language was included in 1996. However, the former building officials did not enforce the 50% limitation after 1996 as they didn't consider the increase in the size of a house in a residential zone or expansion of a nonconforming use since it's permitted and isn't nonconforming. The property is nonconforming due to the number of houses on one lot. And obviously, the increase of the number of houses would be an increase in the nonconformity. I recently filed a zoning application for the expansion of one of the houses. And that house, just for example, was, its campsite was one and a half acres. The existing house contained around 800 square feet of floor area. And the former building official, Wayne Pimental, made the determination that the owner was limited to the 50% expansion of that, so he was limited to 1,200 square feet of floor area. And we had appealed that decision to the zoning board. And the zoning board upheld the determination that was an expansion of a nonconformous use, but they agreed with the applicant's argument that the 50% limitation should be based on the total floor area of all the houses on the lot in 1996 and not to the individual houses. At the time, it appeared there was consensus that the existing ordinance could, could use some tweaking to make it clearer. In that applicant's case, he would have been limited to a much smaller house than the other ones in the neighborhood, even though there's more than enough room on his campsite. And the existing lot coverage for Jerry Brown is, is under 3%. The other major issue that we had is due to the Newton case, an applicant can't request a special use permit and relief from the 50% limitation in the same application, which we would have done if we were, had been able to. In this case, the association at Jerry Brown Farm, they require their own review and approval for any additions to the houses. And this has raised a dilemma for them as to whether they should grant approvals for certain homeowners that will limit what another homeowner can do in the future. The proposed ordinance would carve out an exception from the 50% limitation just for residentially zoned properties for residential uses. And we understand that the zoning ordinance on nonconforming uses is trying to limit them and restrict them. And if you had a, a commercial use in a residential zone, then the 50% rule makes sense. But in this case, you have residential uses in a residential zone. So I'm not sure why there's a limitation on the floor area component of. So with us tonight, I have Marshall Rayouchi. And I was just going to have Marshall maybe briefly explain how the, the current ordinance impacts the association and why they're proposing the amendment. Marshall, do you want to introduce yourself?
Thank you. Marshall Rayouchi, I live at 31 Fire Lane 2, which is part of the Jerry Brown Farm Association. And I also chair what we refer to as our site committee, which is our internal oversight organization, where we review every request for a change to any property inside of Jerry Brown Farm. The dilemma that has, this has triggered is really sort, is really much of a, of a, of a sort of a fairness issue. The, the houses, the 36 sites, the 36 homes at Jerry Brown Farm, many of the homes are on the water and will in fact be eligible for significant increases, meaning that a house that, that by expanding impacts the view of the houses behind them will not be allowed to expand. I mean, that's part of our own association, that's part of the way that we regulate. So we wouldn't give approval to that, so that they, so that we would in fact be very cautious or very, very sensitive to expanding homes. So there are very few homes, or there are homes that, like Dan Cunningham's, the one that is at 35 Fire Lane 2, that have virtually no impact, that can be expanded to any size that's appropriate and that simply don't bother anyone. They're not in anyone's sight view. They're not, they're not, they're not involving any view whatsoever. And there are a number of homes that are just like that, that are very appropriate to expand. We have a very sort of mix. Some homes have not been touched since the, since for 20 or 30 years. Other homes have been significantly updated. We're very cautious, we're very serious about sort of regulating and making sure that it's done in a reasonable and responsible manner. But the way the ordinance or the way that it impacts us right now, there's this, 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 this artificial or sort of this number that comes at us that says that in 96, there were 90,000 square footage of homes that today there are 108. So therefore, there's a remaining 25,000 square feet. So there's sort of a race to say, who should get those 25,000? And it really creates an artificial desire because some homes will never be expanded and other homes have no limitation. So we think that that, the kind of work that Attorney Kenyon has put together provides a solution to this problem that is really effective. And it still gives the town the ability to, gives us the ability to review first, pass along our support or deny the, deny the expansion, and then allows the town internal, the zoning, to look at each case on an individual basis. So it allows for the proper kind of scrutiny on a long-term basis. So I'll stop talking there and ask if there are any questions or if Eric has any additional information that I might be, that might be useful for the planning board to know.
Thank you, Ms. Haroche. Do board members have questions at this point? Mr. Thorleksen?
Yes, thank you. And thank you all for the time that you're giving us tonight and for hearing our, our issue. You know, this is, this association has got put together in 1946. And there's been a organic expansion of these homes ever since then. And I would think at this stage, and Marshall sort of alluded to this, is that right now, there's sort of a handful of, of homes that haven't. right now, there's sort of a handful of of homes that haven't been treated with an expansion. But what we try to be in the association is fair to all our members. Because we are an association, there there isn't a ownership aspect to the the property. We all share in the property. And so we're trying to be equitable in terms of what the opportunity is to build value into our homes. And this is not meant to be personal to me, but just to use the example. My mom was one of the original members of Jerry Brown Farm and bought into this association in 1946. And, you know, she bought a home with my grandparents in that initial year. And so we're in the front row where we are severe by our own association guidelines, very limited in terms of what kind of expansion can be done, which is fair and understood by us and by our family. But the the matter in front of you tonight is, is there a way for us to equitably, like others in our situation, expand our homes to take advantage of potentially what their future value is? And there's a handful of homes like ours. There's others in the association. But I I ask you to consider what attorney Kenyon has proposed here as as a means of of smoothing out, if you will, this this equitable aspect of of what we're proposing here. We we control closely what homes can do, and there's a special permit that is required for the the expansion of our homes. But we're we're looking for some guidance here in terms and some flexibility in terms of what we can do.
Thank you. Are there questions for Mr. Thorrelson? Amy, do you think you could help the board understand this issue? And also, obviously, this applicant is here to or these applicants to resolve issues peculiar to their site and within their jurisdiction of the homeowners association. But can you also touch upon when we look at potential changes to the zoning ordinance, how they might affect things townwide, as Jamie referred to early on?
Yeah, I I can try. In general, my advice to the board when considering applications for text amendments, as with the previous application we discussed. And I think I said this the last meeting. It's always best to try to solve the problem in as narrow a way as possible. So to the extent, and and I think attorney Kenyon has has tried to do this. To the extent you can tailor the text of the proposed amendment to the problem you're trying to solve. That limits the, you know, implications townwide for other properties, other scenarios. There are a couple of different ways, I think, to solve the issue that's presented here. And one potential way, and you know, this isn't what they submitted. But one potential way would simply be to allow a special use permit in conjunction with a dimensional variance for applications of this type. In other words, dwellings on land where because of multiple dwellings on one lot, the use is considered, the entire property is considered nonconforming by use. So that would be one way. And and another way would be exactly what they've proposed. See if I can regain the train of thought here. So again, you know, the issue is, and I think John explained it well tonight. And and in the narrative he submitted, the issue is that these properties can be considered different from other nonconforming uses, right? A business in a residential area. So and as as the application mentioned, there was a zoning board decision last fall that I think, you know, while while decisions in cases of appeals are not necessarily binding for all intents and purposes going forward. I think what the zoning board's decision did was alert the town in some in some way that this is a problem that potentially needs a solution. So the planning board's obligation, as you know, is to provide a recommendation to the council on what was submitted. And there are a few different ways you could do that. With staff's assistance and my assistance, you could potentially recommend an alternate solution. You could endorse what's been submitted with certain recommended changes. Of course, you know, you can make whatever recommendation you think is appropriate, and then it will be up to the council. I'm not sure I I did what you wanted, Maria, but if there are specific questions that maybe I could answer.
Thanks, Amy. Questions and comments from board members? Jamie, did you have your? Yes, Jamie? You're muted.
Sorry, Jamie, because we're having feedback issues. Again, I evening's kind of on point to what I stated earlier on. The concern is, is you have an application before you that is intending to solve a problem at one property that potentially has unintended consequences at others. And I agree with Amy that if you can be construed in the narrowest manner. I always refer to the term as if you're going to open Pandora's box, only crack the lid, don't open it entirely. Because of those unintended consequences, this is a regulation that could exist for 30 or 40 years, long past institutional knowledge of staff or even the members of the planning board. Even Mr. Kenyon brought insight tonight based on his institutional knowledge on another matter. So there is difficulty in that. I think the structure of the regulation could potentially be modified to narrow the effect it may have on other properties within the community. The homeowners association or, you know, or providence associated with this with regards of operation owning the land. And everybody has one is a one share shareholder in the property and of 36 shares. You could again narrow the provisions within here. Again, my concerns were would be if if they're literally looking at their property as a master planned property, that perhaps they already know which properties are are due for expansions and which ones can't be extended. They perhaps could have to submit a master plan associated with any expansions that shows the distribution of the square footage allotment. And again, in the example, there were 10,000 square foot, 10,000 square feet worth of footprints. They're allowed to have 5,000 additional square feet. I was divvied up between 36 properties. Again, is it first one and wins and last one and loses because there's no square footage allotment left? So again, I think with some tweaks and working with council, you have some opportunities here to potentially resolve an issue that occurs on one particular property, maybe two, but doesn't affect 20, 21, 22, or 23 additional properties a number of years from now. So I think you have the baseline and the discussions started tonight.
Thank you, Jamie. Robin, did you have a comment?
I was curious as to whether if if you were to envision the lot broken up, subdivided, would all the lots be of equal size?
They they could not be of equal size. They're they just the location of the houses along the water. There are very dense spots, and there are very rural spots on the 36. So it's very, very uneven. So some places wouldn't even come out to be a quarter of an acre. And other places would come out to be two or three acres. So it's very, very uneven. And yes, so that's the answer to your question.
Thank you.
If I could comment, though, about the application of the what we feel is that the 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 50% rule in itself is in fact a hindrance. We think that that doesn't work in the best interest of both the town as well as the shareholders or the owners of Jerry Brown Farm. Meaning that artificial allocation of the remaining 27,000 square feet. It's an it's really an unnecessary. If you walk the property with us, you would see that there are houses that could be expanded to any size and not have impact. So that they could use up a disproportionate amount of that 27,000 left of that allocation of the 50% rule. So it's it's very, it's 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 difficult to articulate. Some houses would be eligible to use only 500, 600, 1,000 square feet, where others could expand to go to 2,000 or 3,000 square feet. But clearly, the allocation of just that 50% rule is really what we find to be the the difficult. And also, how you then sort of pit one neighbor or one shareholder against another. And we really think that the best way to handle this is not to have that 50% limitation, but to really push the zoning board to really look at each one of those, sort of stand on their own feet like we had for the previous 40-plus years, that that each one was was really viewed on its own merit and then made a decision whether or not it made sense. That's after an internal review occurs first, then the zoning board would then take a take our positive and say, does it still fit within the standards of the of the town itself?
Thank you, Mr. Rayouchi. And of course, an internal review potentially in a different situation might be completely different from your particular homeowners association review.
That's correct. It's because it's unique to the it's unique to the land itself. It's unique to the houses and the land itself. So exactly correct.
Right. Other thoughts, comments, questions? Joe?
I had questions, I guess, for John, and I'm just trying to understand the existing limitations. So as I understand it, we got 50% on the nonconforming. You got a baseline in 1996 that gives you a certain amount that you can expand. And that has been divvied up or it's been being used. Is it the interpretation that additional structure, could additional structure be created right now? Additional residential structure under the existing ordinance?
An additional residential structure would require a special use permit because the nature of the nonconformity is multiple dwellings on one lot. So any property that is considered nonconforming requires a special use permit for addition, enlargement, alteration, etc.
So given the way that the ordinance is written now or the way it's proposed, that'll have no impact on potentially creating additional residential structures?
The requirement to obtain a special use permit would would not change. I don't think this text amendment would supersede that.
So what we're really talking about is how is that allocation, if there is a limitation or not limitation, and how it's allocated? So I got a question for, I think it's Mr. Marshall. Oh, Marshall. As you talk to the members of the association, do you have any dissenting views? And can you tell us what the concerns were from the members relative to what you're being proposing?
Certain members, I would say virtually everyone does not feels would rather or not have a 50% limitation. We'd rather operate like we've we have for 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 a very long time. So there is no dissenting view that we would like very much to not have the 50% rule opposed or impact or or applied to us. I think that the the members view the relief that 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 we're seeking here is very important to certain members to be able to modernize, to be able to expand their homes, to winterize their homes. It would have a severe impact on, you know, I don't I don't know the number is eight or nine of the homes. It would have a very severe impact where they're not limited by by views for the homes behind them. So those seven or eight or nine homes that would be severely impacted have a very strong view that 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 supports this relief or that looks for this relief that we're looking for. But nobody's opposed to it. I mean, everybody thinks that we would like to have function like we had previously without the 50%, having each case stand on its own merit.
Okay, thank you.
Susan?
I think I'd like to follow with what Jamie had suggested, which was sort of a an association master plan of how you expect, if I understand correctly, how you expected houses to be built out, should people choose to build out? And what sort of maybe atmosphere you're hoping to retain? So if the houses that are already very densely built really can't expand, and the ones along the water really can't expand, then how many, like, how much additional square footage are you envisioning for your association homes in the future? And then also, I guess, and I've never been down there. But, you know, if if all of the little beach cottages become 4,000 square foot houses, it will change the nature of your association and the neighborhood and the land. And I guess, is that something that you would? As long as you've decided that's something that's acceptable to you all, and you won't kick yourself later if we give you, if we allow you to build carte blanche, and then everything's a gigantic, gigantic house in your community. I think the idea of a master plan of what you would like to see and how much you'd like to have built might be helpful for us and potentially helpful for you.
Ms. Asra, that's a it's a very challenging mandate, and it's hard for me to envision how we could accomplish that. But first of all, let me and I invite and we would welcome a planning board meeting to occur down at our down at our place so that you could actually see the facility or see the houses and how they fit together. So we would welcome you to 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 tour it and to take a look at it. And Eric and I would be happy to host anything that you would like to do. First of all, there are no 4,000 square foot homes. The largest homes approach 3,200. The average is probably somewhere in the 18 to 2,000 range. They're modest sized homes. It's very difficult to develop a master plan because I'll give you an example. The the there are homes that are on the water. I'll use the example of the Quins, the Quins campsite, the Quins home. They're right on the water. They got a beautiful view, but they're on a ledge. One of the things that we couldn't envision is whether the Quins would want to dig into the ground, meaning they have unlimited ability to square footage by going down. They would have no impact. That front of their house would have a beautiful view of the pond, of Point Judith Pond. And they could add, they could double the square footage of their, they could more than double the square footage of their house by going down. That would be a challenging thing to try to come up with a master plan because some people would not want to dig down. Some people would have the ability to go out. And if you walk the property, you would really see the challenges of trying to develop a master plan. It would, it's difficult because it would be my judgment against somebody else's judgment and whether or not they would want to execute in that manner. So it's a it's a I I have a hard time envisioning developing that kind of master plan. And I think you would if you walk the land with us.
And let me leap in here, too. I would say that Jerry Brown Farm is the ultimate democracy. We we do control, the the association controls the land. And we control the size of the buildings in each of these campsites on the land. But then beyond that, the size of the buildings, and as Marshall was just saying, that really is completely related to our rules and regulations for how they affect the views of the adjoining neighbors and everything else. And if you approach, and and the result of that is if you approached Jerry Brown Farm, as I've I've done for years, coming up the channel, and you look at our association from the water, the homes, for the for the most part, except for the ones kind of further back to the end of the association, they're all very low-rising homes, intentionally so because they are respectful of their neighbors. And so the expansion that is envisioned for especially the the homes that potentially would be candidates for revision, those are the ones that if they were to proceed with that investment, potentially have to go down in terms of Potentially have to go down in terms of. Lower living space rather than go up or expand the square footage in any significant way. So we don't control kind of there isn't a master plan that we control, but we control kind of. What the end result is how it and how it affects the the members of the association and. It's an incredible. Dance that goes on between the members and their interests and their investment. Ideas and their lifestyle and everything else. But we're looking for relief here in terms of having. From the town, an ability to have some flexibility in how we manage that dance.
Eric, if I can add one quick comment. We get one tax bill for land from the town of South Kingston. And we divide that by 36. So part of that give and take, I happen to own a house in the mezzanine. And that house that the Quinn has. We pay the same land tax. So one of the reasons that we have this democracy is in some way. I'm underwriting the expense for the Quins to be on the water. And I'm in the mezzanine with the understanding that he's not going to expand his home. So that's why it all works. There's really a synergy that we work together with one another because it's in our best interest. It's in our both best interests.
Thank you. Josh, did you have a comment or question?
I did earlier, but it was actually addressed, so.
Clearly, there are issues of fairness and democracy here. I think we all understand that. The board needs to look at. The big picture anytime we have a request such as this one and what impact it would have townwide. I certainly. Think and others, please let me know what your thoughts are that a site visit would be a good idea. This is an unusual piece of property. And the fact that. They have one tax bill that's divided by 36 does make things really complicated. And as Jamie and Amy referred. A simple, narrow type of solution. Hopefully, one that's somewhat creative would probably be in the best interests of everyone. If anyone has any further comments. Please raise your hand at this point. Joe?
I'll just make, I guess, a comment that. I'm still trying to get my arms around. Impacts to the the residents, impacts to the neighbors, impact to the community. And we've had several projects come in front of the board. For instance, the one down between the Goister Bar. Where, you know, the bigger the big issue was how much how how much we can enlarge the the structures. And in all those cases, 100% of the occupants or the residents would always want to not be governed by the 50% expansion. So. That's kind of, you know. It's kind of a given understand that, yeah, I'd rather not have regulations and than have them. With that said, we still have the regulations and still govern those expansions in that maternal Goister Bar because of the community and the impacts it have on the community. So I think that's still something we have to consider. I mean, I, you know, Rob, the town manager, always has this map of. The satellite image of South Kingston and how we have this special place where it's not hasn't been developed. And so I'm trying to get my arms around the whole impact to. What the what the community and the neighbors and. I just guess that's just where where I stand. I understand that you have much larger parcels of land and the impacts wouldn't be the same as maybe over on them between the Goister Bar. But I just think we need to kind of mull that over to the community, to the neighbors and to the residents. Where I stand, I guess.
Thanks, Joe. Well said. Josh, did you just raise your hand?
I did. Yeah, I'm trying to wrap my mind around this as well and the and the ways forward. You know, I think. Jamie mentioned the master plan idea and Susan, you know. Brought it up as well, and I I appreciated your comments, Mr. Rayucci, about that. I'm just wondering if, you know. Whether we call it a master plan formally or whether we sort of identifying sort of what are the those governing structures? What are those core values? What are those core things that that? The association itself is looking to preserve and how that sort of democracy. Is is sort of set up and and. I think, you know, whether you call that, I don't know. I'm struggling to to name exactly what that looks like, but. But to me, that would be helpful in in. In understanding, you know, these are different properties and folks would want to do different things, yes. But there may be core things that you want to maintain. And that may be in in line with the community and in line large more largely with South Kingston's vision. As well. So just a thought as I'm trying to wrap my mind around it.
Thanks, Josh. Really good comments. Obviously, as as we try to look into a crystal ball. We realize that homeowners association values and criteria can change over time as well. So again, looking at that big picture. Mr. Kenyon?
Yes, I just wanted to quickly, I wanted to note that we attempted to tailor the. The language as narrow as possible, so it did not include the. Coastal community properties. So those would still be governed by their own regulations in the in their. Overlay district, I believe it is. They have their own standards for expansion. And regarding Susan's question, it it's a it's a good one. And. When it really came to me that there was a problem with this is when I I was representing Danny Cunningham. And he had an 800 square foot existing house. And under these regulations, the the existing house didn't have a basement. If he wanted to put in a 800 square foot, same footprint with a basement, he wasn't permitted to. And that, to me, seemed like a real problem when it it he he wanted to do more than that. But he would have been, he couldn't have even done that. Under the 50% rule. And putting the basement in, which is considered floor air, would have no impact on anybody around him. So that's when we figured. You know, the ordinance probably needed some type of change to make it more reasonable. And I and I think a site visit is a great idea. I I my parents lived there for a while. So I'm familiar with the area, but I'm always amazed I shouldn't be, I guess, because it's a. Private neighborhood, but how many people have never been in there? So I think it would be a good idea to to have the the planning board members go in there and take a look at it.
Thank you. Any additional thoughts, comments? How do board members feel about a site visit? Very good. Jamie and Jay and Brian, perhaps you can. Work to schedule that. And in the interim. Think of what other potential. Solutions there might be. For this particular request. Amy, did you have anything else to add?
Not at this time. I'm sure I'm sure I will going forward.
Yes. Thank you. We will look forward to seeing you again.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next agenda item is an application for Community Development Block Grant, CDBG, funding to support. Warm Acquisition of Welcome House.
So I guess I'm.
Brian Wagner is here to.
Yes, we saw his name on the application. Thank you, Brian.
Yeah, I don't know. This is the first CDBG matter I think I've brought before the. Planning board since I started. I know we have a few new members. I don't know if anybody needs an explanation of what that program is.
Perhaps a brief one would be useful.
Okay, I'll just I'll just make it really brief. And if anybody has any additional questions, so. CDBG or Community Development Block Grant Funding is a federal funding program to support. Various community developments. It can go towards infrastructure. It can go towards home repair. It can go towards. Building homes, repairing homes, many different things. That funding is managed for the federal government through the State Office of Housing and Community Development. And. The grants are applied for by local municipalities. On behalf of sub recipients who actually use the money. So that's a very, very rough overview of of what the program is. Typically, the CDBG. Program issues a grant calendar for every program year, which runs from July to June. This year has been. Very atypical because of COVID, I believe. The State Office of Housing and Community Development did not issue a program calendar for 2020, so we don't have our normal. Grant applicants. That we would normally have every spring looking for money. However. We did receive communication from Westerly Area Rest Meals or Warm. That had. Been negotiating a a deal to take over the Welcome House operations on North Road. And they asked if the town would support a an application to the state. Under one of their rolling application grant programs for affordable housing. And they're looking for grant funding to support that acquisition. Of two properties on North Road. The the Welcome House Shelter property itself. On the corner of Kingstown and North Road. And an additional lot just to the north on the corner of Kersey and North Road. Warm has a a long reputation in Washington County for providing services like this. Their intent is to continue the existing Welcome House. Operations at this location. They don't. Plan on changing anything. And of course, I think everybody is familiar with the the critical. Homeless shelter services that Welcome House provides, not just to South Kingston, but to to all of Washington County. So. I have been cutting my teeth on this application. In terms of the CDBG process, it has not been a an easy thing to do. It's an incredibly complex program. And we have had. Our first public meeting. One of two. We are scheduled to have our second public meeting before the Town Council at their July 26 meeting. What we also need from the planning board is what we're here for tonight, which is a finding. That the grant application is consistent with the town's comprehensive. Community plan. I do have. Russell Partridge of Warm in the audience, along with Seth Sokolov of Barbara Sokolov and Associates, who. Help prepare the grant application. If I. Could bring them in, you'd be more than welcome to ask them any questions.
Brian, I have at least one question first.
Sure.
I was under the impression that the Welcome House also had the property, which was either the the gas station or a mini bot. Over on High Street. Do that? Is that still associated with them and that that property is not included?
Well, that's the first I'm hearing about. And no, it is not included in this application. Just the two properties at number eight and number 22 North Room.
I think they were running it maybe as a welcome lot or something at one point.
I could be off base, but is that the property that the Johnny Cake Center purchased?
So my reference point probably is about a year and a half, two years ago. And I think Affordable Housing was talking about possibly looking at buying that property or helping fund that property for housing. But it was my understanding that that was run by the Welcome House and maybe even. Some of the people that were staying at the Welcome House maybe had the opportunity to work.
If I remember correctly, from that conversation, Joe, it was. We were, we gave the Affordable Housing Collaborative gave. A small amount of money to the Welcome House to look at deed issues around the property. At the Welcome Art. So the Welcome Art is the. On the High Street property, right, that's across from.
And then it was.
Fornier Estates. And then there's property behind it. And then there were some questions about. So I I don't know that Welcome. House actually owned that. I think they were looking into that property at that time. I don't know what the status is now, but.
If if I could, I might be able to give some clarification.
That's great.
To this.
Mr. Partridge, could you just identify yourself for the record, please?
Yeah, good evening, everybody. My name is Russ Partridge. I am the Executive Director for the Warm Center. In Westerly and have been involved for actually for quite some time. With the Welcome House and its operations. Particularly over the last five to six years. And and you're correct, Mr. Murphy, that at one point Welcome House did own that property. Both the storefront or at least leased the storefront and then at one point owned the property in the back. Along with multiple other single and and duplex family units. And all of those family units, anything other than what is on the property known as Eight North. Eight and 22 North, all of those other properties that Welcome House once at one time owned have all been transferred to the Johnny Cake Center of Peacedale.
Okay. Thank you.
So the application that we have put forward. Is is strictly with the property known as Eight Eight and 22 North.
And then the other question, and I'm sure you'll get at this, has to do with the use of the funds. I mean, ideally, I think we would like to see the funds benefiting the residents or benefiting the community, not necessarily the acquisition. So. As you're talking about that, if you could talk about how that would improve. Either services or benefits to those in need.
Sure. This is something that I have hoped would happen for quite some time. By the way, I am also a South Kingston resident. And have been Executive Director of the Warm Center for, I've worked at the Warm Center for 14 years. Executive Director for the past eight. I see this as a a a real opportunity to strengthen. Services that are provided to the folks who are experiencing homelessness. And or on the verge of homelessness by combining these two organizations, I think it really gives the opportunity to. To for Washington County, honestly, for Washington County to have some strength. On a state level when providing homeless services, but also speaking to homelessness and poverty in Washington County. At at Warm, as we have also with with the Johnny Cake Center in Peacedale. We have really developed strong collaborative work with the Johnny Cake Center in Westerly and in Peacedale. I I see this as an opportunity, not only to continue that, but to strengthen it. As we began this process, this process actually has been in the works for about two years. I have been working with, Warm has been working with the Welcome House Board and also the state. To to move this forward. And. It was actually at the state's recommendation for funding that we looked at the CDBG. As an option for acquisition. But I think with the, you know, the work that the Warm Center has done in developing community relations in Westerly in Washington County. My intent would be able to be able to do the same thing. In in South Kingston, Narragansett, and really be able to provide a better service for the people in Washington County, giving them a better opportunity. Not only to be able to stay in their community should they become homeless. But be able to develop more positive resources. For the people who are experiencing poverty and homelessness. I don't know if that answers your question, Mr. Murphy, but.
I I was going to actually ask a follow up, but Joe, Joe, do you want to?
Mute it, Joe.
I'll just make a comment that we can move on to Maria, I guess, and everybody else. I was really hoping that you could point to something a little hotter relative to the benefits to potential occupants such as maybe. Need a facility repairs or maybe.
or maybe providing certain consulting services that wouldn't be available to the Warm, or maybe talking about additional beds that you could take on more people. So I was really hoping that it was something a little hotter than, than what you defined, but maybe you could work on that a little bit. But direct benefits, that pretty much quantitative I was hoping for.
Well, I can, if I could, I'll speak to that in regards to what we've been able to do at Warm. At Warm, in shelter, we serve about 160 people a year in a normal year. As everybody knows, this has not been a normal year, but we do about 165 people in shelter. And that's just in our single adult shelter. And about two-thirds of those individuals, because of the case management services, because of the structure of the program, because of the resources that we have available, about two-thirds of those individuals move out of shelter in about 90 to 120 days, moving from shelter to, to their own apartment, having found a job, saved money, and moving out of homelessness. That'll give you an idea of what our intent is with the folks at Welcome House.
Thank you, Mr. Partridge. And we certainly appreciate your mission and your values. But again, question from Joe for other specifics, what the, the benefits might be to, to the facility or to the occupants of the facility? I think more details would be appreciated if you have them.
I, I, I think maybe the best way that I can answer that is the consistency and the quality of care and programming that Warm provides. I think that, and this is not in any way to diminish the work that's been done at the Welcome House, but I think over the last several years, there's been an inconsistency in, in how programs have been done. And I think with Warm coming in, that will change dramatically. And I think we'll be served better.
Thank you. Brian?
Yeah, I, I think, Russ, I think in our previous conversations, you, you had talked about Welcome House and its financial situation. And I think maybe you ought to talk about that because I think what the board needs to understand is that, you know, without some additional assistance, there's a, there's a question of losing the services that Welcome House is currently providing.
Correct. And I, and I guess on that matter, I, I do want to be kind to my colleagues at Welcome House. But they, in truth, are struggling. They're struggling financially. And, and I think that without Warm coming in and acquiring the building and, and continuing the services there, that it will be difficult for Welcome House to continue. And I think having any other organization coming from any part of the state does not understand the issues that Washington County faces. They're much, although everyone who experiences homelessness experiences the same problems, but the issues here in Washington County are quite different. When you start to look at the transportation issue and the difficulty of getting back to and forth from available resources. But Welcome House is struggling. And I think that the Warm Center coming in will benefit the community a great deal.
Other comments, questions? Susan?
First, Mr. Partridge, I'd like to say I acknowledge your heart and your good work. And we're grateful that there are folks like you that are ensuring that folks in our town are served well. So thank you for your good work. Can I just clarify some things that I'm a little confused? So Warm will be purchasing the actual structures and taking over the programs, but retaining the staff and the directors that are at Welcome House? Or will you do a complete changeover of management of the Welcome House?
I, I.
Sorry.
Sorry.
And further, who presently owns the Welcome House? Is that a corporation or is that a nonprofit? Or is that shareholders? And so if you purchase the property, where does that money go? Is it going to a trust or does it go back into the programs? Or how, can you just explain to me how that works?
Sure. So there is currently a mortgage on the property, and I, I don't have the paperwork right in front of me, but it's about 200, between 235 and $240,000. So the application is to pay off that mortgage. And as far as staffing goes, it would not be my intent to, to make major changes within the staffing. I think that they have, I think what they lack is, is, or what they need is some good, strong leadership and training. And, and myself and my staff would be able to provide that to the, to the folks at the Warm Center, at Welcome House. The folks at Welcome House, particularly James Kern, who has been the Executive Director there for about a year, have worked really hard to, to continue to provide services under very difficult circumstances. And they've done a really good job. I think that with training and with support of, of, of folks, including myself from Warm, could really strengthen and improve the organization.
I think to answer part of Susan's question, anyone can correct me if I'm wrong. The Welcome House is a, is a nonprofit organization that owns that property, has the mortgage, as Mr. Partridge discussed. The, my question, follow-up question would be, in addition to paying off the mortgage, the digital balance would go towards to the Welcome House as payment for the property, is that right? So any, any additional, the 230,000 some odd for, for, can you, can you explain that?
So the, yeah, they, they would portion, about 230,000 of that would go to pay off the mortgage that currently exists. The property is currently owned by Welcome House, which is the nonprofit, as you said, Mr. Daly. They, that nonprofit is dissolving. And once this merger goes forward, additional funds in, in the application would go to pay for the research that has been done around the acquisition of the property, the development of the, of the application, which Mr. Wagner had said is really quite extensive. And for legal fees, any finances that Welcome House currently has, would, they would have to determine where that money would go, but it would have to go to another nonprofit. And I, I, we have had discussions that a portion of what their, their, their financial assets currently would come to the Warm Center. So really, the majority of this application is really for the purchase of the property.
Thank you. That's very helpful.
And so just to clarify, so the balance would be used for research that has been done and legal fees? So it wouldn't necessarily, would there be any funds that would benefit the actual residents?
We had not asked for that in the application.
So.
And Seth, Seth, it may be Seth Sokoloff, who assisted in the development of the application, might be able to answer some questions as well.
If I may, Seth Sokoloff, Barbara Sokoloff Associates. So this particular CDBG pool of money is not available for public services. This is, this rolling type of application is only for acquisition and possible construction and when appropriate of facilities. So this is, this falls under the affordable housing pool of money. Used to be called over the cap by the CDBG folks in Rhode Island.
Thank you. That's helpful. I, I think most of us understand that the CDBG process is a very onerous one. And we certainly appreciate Brian's efforts in, in this and anything that can be done to help us better understand exactly what you're asking for and what the outcomes will be is indeed useful. Other questions or comments? Brian, can you just explain, you, you referred to a public hearing and then an order of notice for the second public hearing, which is, I think you said July 26?
Yeah, so the, the CDBG process requires two public meetings, both with a minimum of seven days' notice. We conducted the first public meeting via Zoom on June 21. And we received an order of notice vote on Monday for the, the July 26 Town Council meeting. And I worked up the ads with the town clerk today. So they've gone, already gone to the paper.
Okay. If there are no additional questions or comments from board members, it is my understanding that Brian is looking for the Planning Board to find that this grant application is consistent with the comprehensive plan. Is that correct?
It's correct, and I would direct the, the board members to Policy 2.4 of the housing element of the 2014 Comprehensive Plan, which refers to, the policy is to develop affordable housing opportunities for the homeless and residents with special needs. And the first implementation bullet point for that is that the town shall identify funding opportunities for the development of emergency transitional and permanent housing for homeless persons. And I would stipulate that that covers this sort of grant application.
Thank you. Do you have, go ahead.
I, I, I'm just going to
Joe, go ahead.
Express that I still don't see the direct impact. So I understand that the money could be used for acquisition. Typically, acquisition would be for potentially a new structure or maybe a renovating an existing structure where we provide additional housing. And even the elements that Brian gave, I still can't see how it either helps additional people or provides better services to the same number of people. I'm for the, for the funding for these causes. I just still don't see the nexus directly benefiting those in need in the South Kingstown community, since it's not changing the number or not necessarily changing the services that they currently receive. I think if that could be expressed, I certainly could support it.
It, it sounds as though, Mr. Partridge, and correct me if I'm wrong, that essentially by virtue of these funds allowing Welcome House or its future iteration to stay afloat, that is the nexus for allowing continued resources for this particular population. Is that correct?
That's correct. And the, the other thing, if I could add, you know, at one time, Welcome House was quite the thriving social service agency. I mean, and over the years has backed off quite a bit. And so one of the things that I would want to do or that Warm would want to do, we have, you know, we have a job training program at Warm. We have a community meal site at Warm. All of these things that Welcome House had at one point, but no longer has, I would like to bring back and, or we would like to bring back into the organization.
Are you saying that we would lose these services possibly if this did not go through? I guess that's the question we're looking for.
It would make it, it would make it more difficult. That's for sure.
Sounds like the nexus.
I, I would be totally supportive of this if I had some type of summary that said, this is the number of people we have right now. These are the services, this is the services that we're potentially going to lose. This fund's going to create, going to have this number of people after. And these are the funds, these are the services that would continue due to these funds. If, if we have had some type of summary specifically showing that, I just feel that still, it's just, it's too loose, that it, that it doesn't necessarily, we haven't given anything hard that directly affects it. If I, if I had a summary, I, I would, I'd be all for it.
Thanks, Joe. I, I understand your concerns. Brian?
Yeah, and, and maybe Amy can help me out here. I just want to make sure that we keep our focus on the right ball here. The, the matter is for the Planning Board for a finding on whether or not this comports with the comprehensive community plan. It's not here for approval or denial of the actual grant application. That decision goes to the Office of Housing and Community Development at the state.
Right. So it doesn't matter what they do with the money. Someone else will figure that out. We just either have to determine if it goes with the comprehensive plan or not.
Yeah, I think Joe's question goes to the kind of evidence or, you know, documents and information that you need to inform that decision. And some of you might have a higher bar than others, and that's fine. But yes, it's, it's a, the focus is consistency or lack thereof with the comp plan.
And, and Joe, those are certainly, I think, worthy questions. Perhaps those will be asked at the Town Council level? Is that anticipated, Brian?
I don't know. We really didn't get into the substance of the discussion at the hearing on the order of notice on, on Monday night. So we can, we can certainly bone up on those things. And, and thank you, everybody, for bringing those concerns to our attention. And I'm sure I'll be talking to Russ and Seth in the future to make sure that everybody is well-prepared for the, the hearing with the Town Council on the 26th.
And as Mr. Sokoloff brought up the point that this particular pool of money is specifically designated for things like acquisition. So it may not be as broad as other CDBG grants or applications have been in the past. That said, what is the board's pleasure? Would someone like to make a motion relative to consistency with the comprehensive community plan, specifically noting Policy 2.4 in the housing element?
Sorry, last question.
Certainly.
First, if we're voting to potentially send this on to Town Council, would it be appropriate to ask if there are members of the audience that have questions or anything else that we should talk about first?
We do have some folks that are in the audience, and we could certainly ask that question. Is there someone who wishes to speak to this application? Raise your hand, please, if you do. I do not see anybody responding to that question. So would someone like to make this motion?
I will make the motion, even though I have nothing to read. But I will make the motion in regards to approving this. Shoot me some direction, folks.
Move, the motion should be find that the application is consistent with the comprehensive plan.
I make a motion that this is consistent with a comprehensive plan.
And I would suggest a reference to the Policy 2.4 of the housing element.
Referencing the, the Policy 2.4, yes.
Thank you, Peter. Would someone like to second that motion? Josh, second. Is there further discussion? Hearing none. Let's do a roll call vote. Susan Axelrod?
Aye.
Joe Murphy?
Nay. And with the asterisk that I'm not voting that it goes against it, I'm only voting that the applicant hasn't shown significant detailed evidence that it does directly support it.
Thank you. Robin Pathier?
Aye.
Peter DiStefano?
Aye.
Josh Daly?
Aye.
And Maria Mack votes aye. Thank you. Good luck with your efforts.
Thank you.
Next agenda item, American Rescue Plan Act. I believe Jamie is going to give us an overview of where the town is at with those funds.
You're muted again.
No. Again, Jay's been receiving feedback on my end, and my connection is a little bit static. But I do have a, a quick little slide deck on the plan, which I But I do have a, a quick little slide deck on the plan, which I will bring up quickly here. And again, this is a very, very brief overview. A presentation done by before the Town Council. So just letting everybody know that the American Rescue Plan Act of 2021 is a three-hundred, is actually a trillion-dollar program. There's actually 350 million. It's kind of that muted mint green pie section here. There's 350 billion for state and local aid. From that, these are kind of the shares of what's coming to Rhode Island. South Kingston is eligible for just under $9 million. Of that $9 million, 3 million is aid to municipalities, and 5.95 is aid to county-based components. So the way the act is written is there is direct aid to the towns, and then there are a lot of government entities with regards to counties. And the act specifically said, when there is not a formal county government, you will still recognize the county divisions within a state, and that will then be per capita based on population within that county form. So that is the extra 5.95 million, or just under 9 million coming to South Kingston. There are very specific eligibility uses. In essence, there are four criteria. There's kind of an economic development package. There was a extra benefit or bonus to public health and emergency providers. Item number three was supplementation of revenue lost to the municipality during COVID. And the fourth was investments in water, sewer, and broadband infrastructure. So all, there's really four criteria, and you have to fall within those. Municipality is really looking at items number one, and that's the economic impact to the municipality and nonprofits, as well as small businesses and households, directly related with tourism, travel, and hospitality. And the fourth is investments in water, sewer, and broadband. The eligible, eligible uses, and what does it mean? Again, there's economic development, tourism, travelism, community grants, utility, infrastructure, organizational needs, and broadband. I'm going through this quickly. And I can answer questions. There was also the offset for tax revenue that is not eligible. And pension fund eligibility is also not eligible. Project development was done at the division head and department level, where our criteria was developed, as well as input from the EDC. The evaluation criteria was really, is the impact caused or exacerbated by COVID? And is there a strong presumption that COVID exacerbated negative economic or health conditions among the low and low-income and social vulnerability communities? And then for infrastructure, is it necessary and related to water, sewer, and broadband? And is the project high-quality and resilient? Initially, there were over 60 projects recommended at division and department head level, with, and those projects were ranked one through four, number one being the highest. Those total, total projects were 37 million. I think our first go-around was 90 million. 90 million was whittled down to 37 million. We then had a second go-around where the projects only ranked with a number one. It's ranked with a number two, with 8.9 million, understanding that that was almost $17 million with only $9 million of eligible funding. That was further whittled down, and that's, to only projects that were ranked one and two or above within three categories for $9 million total. So with that, the categories that came out of that, in essence, are village or economic development downtown revitalization with two subcategories of municipal investment program and private sector investment programs matching grants. Those programs totaled about $7.4 million. Again, this is really the investment in our downtowns. There were five core areas looked at with regards to the villages. And I think council may or may not be leaning to making a bigger impact in one or two of the villages versus dispersing those $7 million or some amount around that with the five villages. Villages being West Kingston, Peacedale, Wakefield, Lower Tower Hill, and the Matunik Beach area. Also, within the initial response was $400,000 for economic impact associated with households and nonprofits on the housing side. They envisioned housing projects that would be subsidized in the $300,000 range, and then housing improvements for elderly in the $100,000 range in a matching grant program. And then with regards to negative impact associated with government services, there were 1.25 million associated with that, and there were two categories there. There was direct municipal investment in social service agencies of about $900,000, and then municipal investments in nonprofits in a grant program. And there were 400,000 in that plan. The fallback is that some of these fall by the wayside. That Plan B would be investment in water treatment and broadband within the community, and those investments totaled 7.45 million. And again, where we are right now, there were two presentations made on June 15th and June 29th at Town Council. There was a public hearing that was held on July 12th, which was actually continued to July 26th for additional input. The town did solicit through a web-based application, kind of solicitation from the municipality and regional nonprofits. There was a total of $9.3 million worth of solicitations. We're working with the Town Manager's Office to try and use that as a sounding board with regards to the funding of the nonprofit through the American Recovery Rescue Act program, and then the town would initiate a formal grant application for nonprofits that will benefit the South Kingston community at a later date. Again, I just wanted to bring you up to speed on where we are on that. I'm just going to stop my screen share briefly and go back to another. Screen share. And just to give the Planning Board, and this is really the part that I think is important to you, that you would be most interested in, is within the category of village revitalization under the municipal investment program funding. We're looking at private sector investment for street lighting, landscaping, streetscape improvements, hardscape goods, sidewalk, crosswalks, expansion, fencing, historic placards, creation of market parks. Let's go down. Trail improvements, traffic calming, wayfinding, new bus shelters, design standards for commercial and business development, old mountain field rehabilitation, enhanced discovery, summer camp, and paramedicine improvements. With regards to the private sector investments, matching grants potentially for facade improvements of $1.5 million, including streetscape improvements and general place making, new improved business wayfinding signage, matching grant there. Lighting LED compliant night sky, fencing on a matching grant, historic placards on a grant program, landscaping, replacement, expanding flowers, architectural services, all potentially on a matching grant program. One of the important aspects is the architectural services, consultations with a registered architect through the American Institute of Architects. A lot of the businesses may not understand the facade improvement program or have an idea how to improve their facades. So we were anticipating the potential ability to have business owners given access to a registered architect for a maximum of 10 hours or about $1,250 worth of consulting services, and we could potentially serve about 50 business owners with renderings and quick sketch-ups, pen and ink drawings of what their facade improvements could be to help them expedite their grant application for facade improvements within those downtown and village areas. And again, if we're just going down further, we, you'll see the second aspect of the $400,000 for to create housing opportunities and expand housing opportunities. South Kingston included two funding for nonprofits. The goal there was to generate additional units within the community on matching grant, potentially of $20,000 per unit. The other one, municipal investments, again, there were some of the natural resource officer, bookmobile, grant contract manager, upgrades the software, audiovisual upgrades, the Town Council, the drone has been taken off, youth employment programs, public safety and mental health staffing, and then the 300,000 nonprofit childcare, nonprofit social services for a pool of 300. And, and those categories quickly added up to 9.1 million. I just wanted to very quickly bring the Planning Board up to speed in a broad-based manner of what the Town Council is looking at. Again, they have a meeting on the 26th. It's an open public hearing, so if any commission men, board members have any comments, please reach out to staff or, or participate in that public hearing.
Thank you, Jamie. We certainly understand that this is within the council's purview, and now is not the time, as much as we might be interested in doing so and nitpicking on any of these items, although I have to say there are other communities that have drones, and they use them for pseudo-site visits, and they use them to help the planning process. So just something to keep in the back of your mind. Any brief? Any brief thoughts, comments from board members? Obviously, as Jamie has said, there's an opportunity at the public hearing on the 26th to speak. All right.
I find it interesting that Plan A is quite extensive and has a lot of good things, and Plan B is kind of point-blank. But I think that with that kind of money available, it's worth the town considering a new facility, because if I'm not, if I'm not correct, all our sewer lines take our water out to Narragansett, treat it, and put it out in the bay. We're not recharging our own aquifer. So that's a net loss of water, and it really would be a good consideration to have a facility that could recapture a bunch of our water.
Yes. Thank you, Robin.
Again, Robin, things like that were discussed and everything, and one of the discussions was this is $9 million of extra money, and that typically those water treatment and, and large-scale sewer plans are programmed within the capital improvement aspect and paid for by user fees over time, that this was a kind of a really a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity to do something that has a long-term economic impact on the community and direct, and with COVID, it has to be directly related to the impacts associated with the pandemic and the, the potential loss and impact on that business community and households. There were some, I brushed through the, the criteria relatively quickly, but everything has to go back to that litmus test and that rational nexus between cause and effect. And one of the items was a drone that, the lack, the fact that they yeah. Thank you.
Josh, did you have a comment?
Good observation and well-spoken.
Thanks, Jamie.
I had a couple of questions about the process and timeline, and, and so if I understand correctly, the, the funding is going to come to the town in, in a couple of tranches. Is that, is that right, I think? And, and it comes through the the State Treasurer's Office first, and then, and then to the town. I guess I'm wondering two things. One, if there's any thought to, you know, I, I can look at this and say, it's a, you know, amazing amount of work that, that town has done in a short amount of time. A lot of people put their heads together and a lot of really great recommendations. I just wonder, you know, I know myself, I wasn't able to, to join some of the Town Council meetings. It's a time of year that's tough for people to do that. I'm wondering, you know, the possibilities for community input further down the line when, you know, we've got, this will come in tranches. And, and additionally, that I think I'm aware of, the Rhode Island Foundation is leading a sort of community convening conversation around ARPA funds and, and how they maybe best use and trying to sort of share best practices and ideas across the state as well. So, so it's more process-based, just about, you know, questions about the, the timeline and, and when and how the funding will come down, and, and thoughts about, you know, putting it all into, you know, dividing, dividing it up all right now versus, you know, being open to what might come in, in further conversations.
Thanks, Josh. Anyone else? Susan?
Could I just ask a question for clarification? Is this completely separate from all of the local organizations and nonprofits that pitched their ideas to the Town Council at a meeting a couple of weeks ago, and there's an ongoing application process? Is this separate from that? Or is there overlap with some of those agencies taking on some of this work if we allocate this funding?
Susan's correct that I mentioned that the town had solicited nonprofits for a kind of a quasi kind of suggestion grant application. So if these funds were, what would you use them for? Again, the, we received almost $9 million worth of requests from the social service agencies, and that was, that's being used as a sounding board against the original 500, sorry, $300,000 program for nonprofits. So the Town Manager's Office is evaluating those solicitations that came in and potentially looking at adjusting the numbers. Again, some of those proposals were regional-based or south county-based versus South Kingston-based. So again, that evaluation is continued. And to Josh's point, I think a little bit of it is, is a moving target. South Kingston is, I want to say, ahead of the curve. Other municipalities are asking for copies of our PowerPoint presentations and our spreadsheets and asking us how we have done it so that they can replicate it. So I guess that, that's a pat on, on the community's back that we are out in front of this, but I think it is a somewhat of a evolving process, and I think council will continue to discuss this, but needs to set some parameters on the, the funding buckets and the buckets that money will be targeted for so that we can start to program those on a project base. You have to have the, the money, in essence, earmarked within a three-year program and completely spent within a five-year timeframe. So this is a very tight initiative that the town needs to move quickly on. But again, with input and not devoid of public comment. That's why the council had their initial hearing and continued it the 26th.
Thank you, Jamie. Similar to, it's often more difficult to be a grantor than a grantee. So it is now 10 past 9:00. We generally try to wrap up our work sessions around 9 o'clock. This is a much longer than normal agenda. We do have a few small items left. And then the suburban architecture and design. Jamie, I'm not sure if you want to go through that tonight or push that off to a future meeting. You, you have a better idea of how long the presentation is.
I have a slide 60. I think if, if the Board's comfortable with it, I think it's a much better discussion if we're all in person. And that in-person meeting, if the executive order from the governor is not extended, which I believe is the tack that's going to occur, in all likelihood, you will be in person at your August workshop work session, and I, it would be a much better, more productive, interactive meeting if we're all in the room together and everybody's comfortable with that, and the slides, one are either on your laptop as we go through them or also on the large-screen TVs and getting your feedback. And again, the, the slide deck- and getting your feedback. And again, the the slide deck that I had for you tonight is just basically starting the discussion for your planning staff being Jay, Brian and I, along with Carolyn Lynn to understand where your palette is for what's acceptable to South Kingston, both starting the discussion on style, architectural forms, uses, compatibility within a building with different uses for different buildings. And again, it's starting the discussion. We, I was able to work with both the town manager's office and finance as well as the town council. I could thank them for that. Now, we did, we were able to put thirty thousand dollars into a fund for next fiscal year to potentially start the work associated with developing design standards for the community as it relates to commercial and business. So again, this is starting that conversation to try and get a jumpstart on that program. But I'm more than comfortable nine, twelve at night.
Yes.
To push a slide deck off for a month.
Thanks, Jamie. And and with the board's agreement, it may make more sense to have that conversation in a meeting in and of itself. And we certainly, I think, all understand that this has been a goal for us for quite some time and look forward to having that conversation and positive results.
And in person, you can boo and cheer for the slides if you don't like. I mean, more interactive and.
Thank you. Let's move on then to planning board liaison activities. Joe, do you have anything for us from the Affordable Housing Collaborative?
No, the actually Affordable Housing did not meet last month.
Very good. The only thing that I have from the scenic roadway group is that we will be meeting in August and we will have some guests from DOT in September. And looking forward to producing a a great document. Update from planning staff.
Again, managing workload and you know, we have the American Rescue we're working on. We working with the state on the review of our comprehensive community plan. And waiting for their final review of that document. And then the other aspect is with the governor's executive order, I know I've spoken with the vice chair, Maria, on this one, that it appears that the executive order will not be extended. Amy, protect, that you can weigh in on this, that we will be in person starting potentially even late July, if not at least in our August setting. So I wanted to make sure everybody's comfortable with that. You're familiar with the town council chambers setup where everybody is is up elevated on the platform. You are close to each other with regards to whether you feel comfortable being vaccinated or not vaccinated. Or whether you would like us to look at an alternative setup in front of a formal council setup where there would potentially be a little more separation between individual members. I just wanted to reach out and engage your feedback.
Thoughts from board members on this? Susan?
Is it unacceptable to ask if all board members who we will be in contact with are vaccinated?
I want to make sure we're not going anywhere near discussing health info in public.
Right.
But let me, let me connect with staff after tonight. And we can get into what we can and can't do. But I just want to, I gotta put an end to the discussion in public tonight before it starts.
I wasn't, I wasn't trying to take a poll.
That would be great, Amy. I think that would be really helpful. Obviously, with seven of us versus five, which is what the council seating arrangement is. We are in much closer proximity. And I think we need to ensure that everyone is comfortable with the situation. So Jamie, you'll have a conversation with Amy and then reach out to the board so that we can move forward in the best, most productive manner possible.
Yes, I don't care.
Anything else from planning?
So I have one more question. So Jamie, would we be setting it up the way the town council did Monday night where folks could still participate and ask questions or comment by Zoom? But and so it's sort of a hybrid?
My understanding is the executive, and Amy can correct me, the executive order is not. It would be an in person meeting. It would potentially be live streamed, but it would not be interactive with the public remotely.
I I would like to speak on this since we're into the subject. We are basically going back to the way things were right before the executive order came out in two thousand and twenty. So back to the way things were means meeting in person and public access, but not public participation. That is my understanding unless either the manager or the council directs us otherwise.
Thank you, Amy. Susan, does that answer your question?
Yes, thank you.
All right. Next agenda item, update on legal issues. Amy, do you have anything for us?
Jamie covered it on the executive order. And just to provide a little more detail. And particularly for those of you new to the board, the the Open Meetings Act bars communication by board members, electronic communication, except for purposes of scheduling. So emails about when people are available for a meeting are okay. We've all been living in the world for, you know, a year plus of the Zoom meetings. That is going away after July twenty third, right? That's when the executive order as extended requiring remote access and allowing remote meetings will expire and apparently will not be extended further than that. And who knows what will happen in the fall next year going forward? I'm not sure how many people, members of the public realize that remote meetings are not going to be happening. There may be some pushback. We'll have to see. But I am definitely looking forward to meeting those of you who I haven't met in person. And I will. Staff and board members. And I will be coordinating with staff because I think it's probably due or maybe even overdue for a training on legal issues. Potentially including, you know, the ethics one oh one for board members and, you know, fundamentals of land use and subdivisions. Take your pick. And I'm happy to do that. You know. In person. I'm happy to do that one on one. So I will be in touch with staff about that. And once, we are still waiting, as you know, to see all the dust settling from the end of the session. At some point, we'll be putting together a memo with, you know, explaining legislative changes affecting land use. So that can be passed on to you for review. I don't think I'm, I don't think I have anything else in particular to share. Maybe I'm forgetting something.
Thank, thanks, Amy. I know that statewide planning has been doing monthly trainings. They did a recent very introductory land use training and plan to add more. I know that at the last one, there was a specific request for a session that was entirely devoted to comprehensive permits, which I think would be welcomed by everyone. So any, any kind of training efforts, I think, are always positive. Do we have any other? Anything else with regard to schedule from staff? Upcoming schedule?
On the other item, Mam Chair's South County Hospital has asked to defer their hearing from your July meeting to August. And I know you had scheduled that at a special meeting in July. And I don't know if that was still your intention to look at calendar in August to schedule a special meeting.
Well, if they have made a request for August, we should certainly consider what the options are, how heavy our workload might be for our regular meeting and work session, and of course, the availability of board members. Is this something, Jamie, that you could send out a doodle poll for? And give us some advice as to what our workload looks like?
We could do that. Also, you know, now we're in person, we have to make sure we have meeting space available.
Yes.
And Jay, we would have time to, between now and the meeting on the twenty seventh.
To send out a doodle poll? Yeah, I'm sorry about.
Unless folks want to discuss it now.
For a moment. The next regularly scheduled meeting on the twenty seventh.
Yeah, we would, we would have to look. We would have to look at chamber availability.
Okay.
Mam Chair, we'll handle that internally and I'll reach out to planning member.
That sounds good. Thank you. Is there anything else from anyone?
So just to be clear, I'm correct that we're going to be moving the meeting that we had scheduled for July twenty ninth to August. Isn't that correct?
Yes, that was an extra special meeting for that particular topic entirely.
Although I I'm not sure I want you to take it off your calendars just yet. I just wanted, and I don't know if we want to have two meetings in one week. That's probably not preferred for anyone. I had thought about it as a potential training night since you already had it on your calendars, but maybe August is a better time for that.
Thanks, Amy. Would someone like to make a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion from Joe, second.
Second.
Second from Susan. All those in favor, please raise your hands. Motion carries. Good night, everyone. Thank you.
Good night.
Thank you, everyone.